Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Woodland Park City Council meeting for Thursday, December the 5th. This is a regularly scheduled meeting. And I'll now call the meeting to order. And Cindy will take a roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Turley.
Present.
Gary Bravetto.
Here.
Bob Carlson.
Here.
Carol Harvey.
Here.
Ken Matthews.
Here.
John Schaefer.
Here.
Eric Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a couple of presentations to begin with tonight. And the first one is going to be by Tim Seibert of NES. And it's about a design concept for Woodland Station. Welcome, Tim.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, thank you for having me this evening. Again, Tim Seibert with NES. We're Land Planning Land, Landscape Architecture Consulting Firm. We've been retained by the Downtown Development Authority to work on a concept or an updated concept plan for the Woodland Station development. We've been working with Brian Flier as the director, as well as several of the property owners to establish this vision to move forward. Brian, do you want to say anything?
Okay.
I will move into the process or the project. I know you all know where Woodland Station is, south of Highway 24, which is on the north side of the image. You have Park Street, Bergstrom Park, right here in the center. And then on the far west end is West Street that kind of borders the area that we were asked to study. The Woodland Hardware property is located right here, and as you know, is under construction. Our task was to work with the board and the property owners to come up with a revised concept plan to update the intent for the project. So as we move through, I'll give a brief summary of the plan and then show you, we have some images. And you should have a handout of what I'm presenting. If you take notes, if you want to ask me questions, please feel free to let me know. But as we look at the plan and we come down Center Street, Park is located right in the center of the project. And one of the things that was really trying to do is create a connection from Bergstrom Park down into the rest of the development. We look at some new activities and new areas of focus in Bergstrom Park, bring some water opportunities to really create a sense of arrival and attract people down into the center core of the project. A new street that would basically parallel Center Street, we were calling it Festival Street, would become the new activity center for this central area of the project, which includes a farmer's market and a beer garden area that is in association with the development that Arden Weatherford is doing with Beer Works, some two-story retail residential buildings flanking this expanded open space with the farmer's market and beer garden associated with Bergstrom Park. And then just to the west of Festival Street, where the old AmeriGas site is, is what's called a micro-retail type of environment, which is small retail buildings that could have 500, 1,000 square feet and up to 2,000 square feet of space for different uses such as artists or people who have small home-based businesses that need a retail opportunity there, as well as restaurants, to really create a pedestrian-oriented activity center across from the beer garden, farmer's market, to create this new core and hub for Woodland Station. Saddle Club Drive, which currently exists on the south side of Woodland Hardware, would be extended. And in this plan, after a lot of discussion with the intent to try and extend it all the way over to West Street, making that connection at an existing traffic signal helps increase some of the pedestrian as well as vehicular access throughout the site within, again, some mixed-use, two-story office, retail, commercial area immediately to the south of Saddle Club Drive. And near the corner of Park Street and Saddle Club Drive is a family entertainment complex. I know that Brian Flier has been discussing the potential of development of that site. Could have bowling alley, could have other activities located in that facility. Also, in the plan is a 500-seat event center that could be used for concerts, performances, other entertainment venue in a larger setting. Then also with a hotel, there's been some interest in another hotel development within the bounds of the property. Immediately to the south of the center area is some concentrated parking, we're hiding that behind the buildings, really trying to provide parking not only for the uses here, but also for the bigger environment that is being created in Woodland Station. Another element that we wanted to make sure we were addressing was stormwater and drainage needs. This plan utilizes a new surface stormwater detention pond, pretty close to where it was planned originally in the Woodland Station area, but with surface drainage, trying to create a park amenity with future trail connections. And then as Festival Street would extend down to Columbine, again, trying to create a bigger network all the way around for the project. One of the central elements that was, the board was very interested in was trying to enliven the space with something that Woodland Park doesn't have a lot of, and that would be a water environment and an activity center that would be unique to this area. One of the elements that I talked about up on the plaza off Highway 24 would be the installation of a water feature that would create a waterfall to create some softening of the noise of Highway 24 to the development where the farmer's market and some of the beer garden would be, enliven that space with a spray ground, play activity for kids and adults alike, and that would then integrate into that beer garden area as the center core of the map illustrates, creating this larger, more open space environment. As we look at architectural styles for some of the other areas, the event center, really trying to create a mountain architectural feature with some of these images, a very open farmer's market that could be used as a beer garden component as well, creating this public-private partnership. Then again, some two-story development areas where we would have retail office potential on the first floor with residential units above. And one of the things that I refer to it as Festival Street, but our Kip Unruh and Arden are very interested in what's called a Wunurf. It's a German term for an integrated pedestrian vehicular environment where it's kind of seamless, where bikes and cars and pedestrians kind of intermingle, and everyone knows to look out for each other, and it's slow, and it creates a festival atmosphere. And this is the environment that they envision, that we envision along that Festival Street, really creating this kind of seamless integration of the vehicular, pedestrian, and bike facilities all in one, again, trying to create a festive atmosphere. Because you have a full agenda, I've been very brief. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this plan. I'm sure Brian would be happy to answer any questions you might have also.
Any questions for Tim from council? Yes?
Tell me where those mixed-use, so what these would be located.
Sure. So there are basically four buildings, well, five buildings, that have the ability for two-story use, mixed use. So it'd be these two facilities, these buildings, right here along Saddle Club Drive, and then the two buildings along Center and Saddle Club on the north side, and then there over by the micro-retail, there'd be another opportunity for a multi-story building.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
I guess my question is, what was the purpose in the study? How is this going to lend itself to future development?
Ah, here comes Brian.
You know, I had to say a word, too. Really what it allows us to do is it's a marketing plan in many ways. In order to be able to go to a developer, we do have, obviously with Woodland Hardware built, we have synergy. And we really look at Vector Bank as an anchor, now we have Woodland Hardware to the East as an anchor. We have an active development group with Arden Weatherford, Kip Unruh, Steve Randolph, that are participating in both the AmeriGas site and Lot 2. So we have synergy now, but we have to be able to have something we can communicate with. One of the things I want to stress, because I know I've heard this from both council and other individuals, is that we've respected the original engineering that was a part of the plan, the matrix engineering concept, particularly as it relates to utilities, road layout, stormwater, and the original preliminary plat. So there's active discussions about everything on this particular concept plan. And the other thing that's important, you'll recall, we had a lot of elaborate design drawings in the past that required structured parking, et cetera. All of, everything that we have on this current plan is surface parked. So we know that there is a reality to this. Will it change? Of course it will. But it gives us a context from which to move forward, and that's really what was driving the original intent of this design.
Brian, if you could clarify the difference between, say, a concept plan, a site plan, and construction drawings, the level of specificity and the ability to deviate from a concept plan?
Sure. The concept plan is just that, it really gives us a sort of map, if you will, to what we can see in the future. When you get into site plan, you're really tying down based on code requirements and zoning requirements. You take that to another level, and then you get into construction documents. This phase, and for example, using Woodland Hardware, we went from a concept to a site plan that was approved by the city, then we went into construction documents, and then finally, we're heading to a certificate of occupancy. It's the beginning of a process, again, where we can communicate effectively with not only with developers, but with the city, which we've, and the DDA in this case, as partners as we move forward with this project.
Yes, Bob.
Thank you. Yeah, this looks much more affordable in the context of the previous plan, which was like $50 million, I believe. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but...
That's close.
This allows you, each person or company that wants to develop to find their niche in this particular area. Another question I had was, a while back, I understood that the Corzecwas, who were interested in doing a bowling alley, were thinking now in the DDA property. Do you have the latest on their plans?
I do. And of course, the drawing itself relates to this particular building here, which has a 17,000-square-foot footprint and a 3,000-square-foot mezzanine. I'm in communication with them several days out of the week. As you may know, they're in Guam, coming back in December. They were actively talking with Park State Bank and USDA on loan options, and they'd done a feasibility study. It does, it did prove out that they can, this type of use, 12 lanes with laser tag, sports bar concept, family, a small private family theater, some indoor golf, they're moving forward with that, and we're working with them as we go through the process.
Thank you.
The other question I had, Brian, was the farmer's market, have you been in discussion with anyone about that particular structure, or if something else came in that could take that footprint, would you entertain that?
You know, we've had active discussions with the farmer's market board, and they're very interested in moving over this site. It's been a collaborative effort with the development team, I mentioned Arden Weatherford, Kip Unruh. If you don't know Kip, he's a Kansas City developer, you may have had the opportunity to meet with him, and then Steve Randolph. They would like to see some public-private arrangement on the property. The particular building that we're looking at right now is right here. Festival Street in itself would be much like what we have currently, except that that would be dedicated for the farmer's market instead of what is currently existing now. So there have been active discussions.
Okay. David, when we was talking about the farmer's market here, weren't we kind of looking at the concept for Memorial Park, not an allocated space for farmer's market, but when we kind of looking at how farmer's market might expand into Memorial Park when we do a redesign or not?
Not so much. I think there could have been some potential there in the, some of the covered areas in that southwest corner. But I think that from the inception of the DDA, it's always been a dream that the farmer's market could be in that area to bring that pedestrian activity into that central part of town.
Mm-hmm.
I think, though, that Ms. Harvey had a second question, Brian, and it had to do with, would you entertain something else other than the farmer's market in that space?
Yes. If it doesn't work out that the farmer's market can work in this area, there are other options. The beer garden is, and Arden Weatherford's here as well, but the beer garden will function in that area, but there has been a lot of discussion with the farmer's market. They're looking for a permanent home, and they're very interested in Woodland Station. But the short answer is yes. If that didn't work out, there are other options. And that's, again, part of this conceptual nature of the plan.
And I would think that, you know, if you did have farmer's market here, because it goes on, you know, for half a day, you would get some, maybe where folks would be at that, and then they'd be going to some of the little shops, and you get that kind of synergy that would go on that would be kind of ideal, stop over and have a beer, that's always a good idea. Sometimes. Yes, Bob?
Yeah. I also like the idea of the water features, after having been to Breckenridge and a few other of these mountain towns where you have that beautiful stream going through town. Back to the previous plan, though, we did have mixed-use development on that. And was there, did we make any progress as far as zoning issues or that would allow mixed-use development for that previous that could carry over to this? Basically, what I'm, I agree conceptually with this.
Right.
But if there are any impediments that you can alert us to, that, you know, I want to be able to say, hey, yeah, I'm for having that neo-urbanism look of a mixed-use and that sort of thing. So if anybody has difficulties with that, it would be good to let you know upfront so that when you're negotiating these issues, that's not a big impediment future.
Well, one of the things we did was, we worked very closely with the planning department. And this particular, the overlay zone, and we're going to talk about signage here in a little while, does allow all of these mixed-use concepts. That's the beauty of the Woodland Station overlay. So everything you see here is allowed as a land use function. So that is a good point, and we've had a lot of discussions with planning about, as we go through the process. And obviously NES did as well.
The only other comment I had, though, was in the plan that we saw for Memorial Park, there's also a water feature or a splash pool, which wouldn't be very prudent to have today or tomorrow.
Sure.
Somebody's going to get one, somebody's not, but...
Right.
A water feature of some other type would still be possible.
Yeah, it's, you know, in the plan, it's a unique feature that draws in. One of the things that's very unique about Woodland Station, particularly with the farmer's market, it draws people in, and that's the intent. This is an amenity that would allow that type of activity, whether it's a splash pad or if it's a waterfall feature, or if it's a stream-like feature. You know, there are several iterations of design that'll go on before we hit that final mark, but the idea is to create something unique.
Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
If I could quickly, I just want to point out some advocates that have been working with us on this, obviously Arden Weatherford, and Gary Crane, Steve Jurislow, also with Main Street as well. So again, thank you for the opportunity this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to item 4B, we're now going to have a presentation by Stephanie Troller, President of DOLA, regarding the Main Street program. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here and talking about our program. I'm going to try to find my presentation. There it is.
And I'll just ask you to state your name and identify yourself and who you're with, and maybe identify the other folks that are here with you tonight.
I'd be happy to. My name is Stephanie Troller. I'm with the Department of Local Affairs. With me today is the rest of the team, Tim Stroh, he's our architect, and Shay Ein, she's our specialist. And we're really happy here to, happy to be here talking to you guys about our program. Does everybody know who DOLA is?
And I want to ask you to maybe pull the mic down, because we're broadcasting, and that way everybody can hear you.
I wasn't nervous until just then. May I thank you for the reminder?
I'll come down, you can slap me around, and you'll feel fine then.
Okay. Does everybody know who DOLA, Department of Local Affairs, is? It's a state agency. We're known for two things, technical assistance and financial assistance. We have a lot of different divisions. We touch a lot of local governments. Our mission is to strengthen Colorado communities. Our partner is the State Historic Fund, and that's how we got Tim, the Main Street architect, through a very generous grant. Our missions are aligned to help through the Main Street program and historic preservation. So I'm also going to be quick. Brian said you do have a pretty full agenda, so I'm just, what I'm going to do today is kind of go over the program briefly, and then talk about our downtown assessment and some of our, the process around that, and then talk about some of the benefits and a little bit about, a little bit about the requirements of the program. So in the late '70s, there was a trend happening throughout the land. A lot of people were moving out of city urban centers and into the suburbs. And the state, or excuse me, not the state, the National Trust for Historic Preservation, they came up with this concept of the Main Street four points, which we'll get into, because a lot of our historic buildings were being lost from, for a variety of reasons, deferred maintenance, URAs were, the trend there was to destroy them and, you know, knock them down. So they came up with the Main Street approach, mostly because in order to have, save these great historic buildings, you have to make them economically viable. And the Main Street program is really important because we focus on downtowns, because they're their most visible indicator of a community social and economic well-being. So these great, smart people in the late '70s, early '80s came up with a four-point approach. It's been implemented in 48 states across the nation. Over 2,000 communities are in the program, millions of jobs, millions of dollars of investment. It's a program that works. It's, the bugs have been worked out, and we are the coordinating agency for the state. That's a touchy little button. The four points work together to provide a comprehensive approach to your downtown. The four points are organization, design, promotion, and economic restructuring. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but the organization is really focusing on your fundraising, your volunteer recruitment, retention. Economic restructuring is keeping your businesses, that retention piece and the expansion, as well as giving them a little bit of a competitive edge by trainings and hopefully attracting more community, more businesses to your community. Design, that's a pretty easy one to wrap your head around. It's your public space, it's your private space, it's your historic assets, it's lighting, it's a lot of things. And then promotion is how we communicate all those great things about a community to tourists, to your residents. It's creating a positive image for your community and your downtown, and inviting people to come back to your downtown. The Main Street approach often uses these eight guiding principles, kind of to frame things. And what it is, is we're not going to reinvent the wheel. We want to capitalize and build upon your existing assets. Everybody has unique buildings, or they might have a natural asset that, or their people sometimes can be referred to as an asset as well. Change kind of comes slowly, it doesn't happen overnight, there is no magic wand, sorry. But we, when we do change, we want to focus on that quality. We want to start slow and build up, and bringing a lot of people along with us. You guys are going to do the work. Tim, Shay, and I are here to help and provide resources and guidance, but it's ultimately up to you guys and your community to return your downtown back to its awesome glory that, you know, could be. And again, we're always here to help you with those public-private partnerships, and that's what we're going to talk a little bit about today later on with the assessments. So these are always kind of just in the back burner of all of our work, these eight guiding principles. We have 13 Main Street communities throughout the state of Colorado. They, we have them all over, Eastern Plains, West Loop, South, North, Front Range, variety of different sized communities as well. Our smallest town is a toss-up between Victor and Lake City, right around 400, depending on how many second homeowners are in town that day. And our biggest, Montrose, which is about 20,000. Our program works in all of them differently. We try not to be a cookie cutter type program. It's, we customize all of our technical assistance to the needs of those communities. So we're always on our toes, trying to stay on our toes. The Colorado program has three tiers. There, we accept programs in as a candidate, they can move to designate it, and then on to Main Street graduate. And what that is, is just capacity building along the way. When you start off as a candidate, you're just kind of exploring the Main Street program, how is it working, finding out, kind of getting your feet under you in relation to the program. That phase can last anywhere to three to five years. We're DOLA, we're not really a hard-hitting agency, we're a white hat agency, we're a bunch of softies. So we will work with you, and whatever happens, typically, we like to see people moving on through three to five years, moving on to a designated community. And one of the qualifiers to do that is to hire staff, full-time staff, to do that. So that's the big one. And then designated community, once you're there, that phase also lasts about five years, depending on variables that can be happening in a community. And that's when the program really kind of takes root. Everybody gets it. The business community knows what it is, everybody's working together, and the consensus is there. And then once you're ready to move to a graduate, that could be, that could take a little bit longer. You guys are a well-oiled machine, you don't really need us, we just want to keep you close to our program to help mentor new communities, get some of the technical assistance as well. But that's when you're at a graduate level, you're good. And I put on here some of the criteria for the candidate as well, the candidate phase, mostly because Brian asked me to talk quickly about the assessment program, the downtown assessment. So that is one of the qualifying things we like to see before you come into the program, because it really kind of helps build that consensus and start organizing everybody into the four points and engage the community as well. The assessments, which is why I'm here to really talk about, is a partnership between Department of Local Affairs, Office of Economic Development and International Trade, Downtown Colorado, Inc., I use acronyms a lot, United States Department of Agriculture, and you guys. And really what it is, we provide financial support, those are all the partners to kind of take that cost down, because we all value this process. It does really engage your community, it starts, the jargons and the lingo and the Main Street vocabulary starts to be introduced, and it really starts getting, starts to get people thinking how this all works together. So DOLA pitches in two buck, 200 bucks. Two bucks, $2,000, excuse me. Office of Economic Development and International Trade, 1,000, USDA, 3,500, and then you guys, you guys take the rest. But it evens it out a little bit, so it takes that brunt off of you guys. It's a two-day visit, it's organized by our partner agency, Downtown Colorado, Inc. The first day is a team orientation for everybody on your team. It's a variety of different professionals coming from each of those four points. So we usually have an architect, an economic developer, a land use planner, landscape architects, you name it. People, usually there's a DOLA staff on there for some of the financing tools as well. And so we receive an orientation, usually a tour, and from city staff, just kind of talking about what is important to you guys as a community. And then we hold a series of focus groups, and those focus groups are your business community, your elected officials, your nonprofits, anybody who has a voice and a stakehold in the downtown. And we, our job that day is to just listen. We don't really provide any opinions. If you've met Kat Carell with Downtown Colorado, Inc., she will yell at us if we offer any of our opinions or observations as well. So that night, we kind of work through the night, organizing everything that we heard, and coming up with observations and recommendations. And then we come back the next day, and we present to you guys and what we think, some of the things that you should be working on. Then we go back home, and then usually about two, three months later, we provide a final report, what, that has an action matrix, and that's really all the tasks that we think you guys should be focusing on, broken out into who should be doing it, how long it should take, what should start first. And really what it is, it's just that initial recommendation, that initial roadmap to get you down on your way. It's a living document, it can and should evolve. That's the beautiful thing about Main Street, is that we're not going to be stagnant, we're going to continue to evolve and refine our process, and adjust to all the different variables that can affect elected officials coming and going, or major catastrophes, which we had quite a few this summer. How do we always address these things? So that's it, an assessment does build, it does start to build that consensus within a community, and it is that platform, that starting, that starting place. From then, you can come back in and join the Main Street program. From then, you can come back in and join the Main Street program, but we do have some requirements. They're pretty minimal, to be honest. We, we do want you to track your success, and we do that quarterly through reporting. We like to track, what we call our metrics, job creation, businesses opening and closing in your downtown, public investment, private transactions, streetscapes, all that sort of thing, we, we track for you so you can kind of measure your success and, and determine whether or not if something's working or if it's not working. And then we can autocorrect along the way. We do want you to come to trainings throughout the year. It's important. You never know when you're going to get that little nugget of knowledge from either us or your peers. We have found through this process that the peer-to-peer exchange, you, talking to your counterparts in other communities is very valuable, and you, you can kind of get in the trenches with them a little bit. We also want the Main Street program to present to you guys annually and have you closely related. Did you have a question, Mary?
Oh, no.
Look pensive. We also require annual work planning and budgeting. Some of those autocorrects along the way, we break it down year by year. We sit down with our communities and, and our committees at each of those board points. We try to plot out goals and the pathway to get there. Like I said, there's, there's autocorrects along the way, and that's okay, but really we want you to make sure that you're achieving your goals and achieving your metrics. And eventually, we want you to have staff. There are some benefits, and it's putting all these pieces together. It's really that focus on your downtown. As I mentioned, it's, it's the heart of your community, and if you have a healthy heart, it ripples out into the rest of your community. It is the most visible indicator of a, of a community's social and economic well-being, and it's important. It's, it's our, our collective history is stored in our downtowns. We also give you a little bit of money, not much. We're not on the, we're not on the financial side of DOLA. We're on the technical assistance side of DOLA. But we do give you small financial rewards, depending on where you are in the program, depending on budgets as well. It's always susceptible, as I'm sure you, that's not shocking news. We do have Tim, who can provide free architectural services to your property owners in the contents, context of historic preservation, because he does come from the historic, State Historic Fund. Training in the four points, annual work planning. We publicize you guys a lot. We post on our Facebook, we post about your businesses, whatever you want us to communicate to the broader audience, we, we are happy to do that. We want to share your successes as well because if you guys are successful, we are also successful. And with that, I'll leave it up to questions, and, and there's our contact information, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thanks very much. Been hearing a lot, quite a bit on this from a couple of the advocates for this here locally, of course, is Brian from the DDA, and Councilman Bravetta has been really working this, and I guess, you know, my question would be, out of all this, is kind of, where are we in the process and what's next for us?
Do you want me to answer, or? Well, I think before we could accept you guys into the program, you would have to fill out a letter of intent. Those are due July 1st, but we really want you to have that downtown assessment through DCI. We'll partner with you. It's on a first-come, first-served basis. We don't, we can't provide them to everybody throughout the state, so I would encourage you to get that scheduled through DCI. Once that's done, the letter of, like I said, letters of intent are due July 1st, and the process is, the staff will provide our pros and cons of all the communities. It is a competitive application. We provide our pro-cons to our advisory board, and our advisory board provides recommendations to our executive director, Reeves-Brow, and he has the final decision.
Okay.
And then, once that's done, you're in the program and you can start reaping all the benefits.
And I'm sure, you know, I go to Montrose quite a bit in the summertime, and I'm sure there's lots of things I don't see, but I'll tell you, they're, I think it's their Thursday night, Main Street.
Their art strolls?
Yeah. That goes on is pretty darn nice that they do over there, and, you know, it's a nice, really nice downtown area for doing that, so. Any questions? Yes, Carol.
I'm curious, where is Victor in the process, and what have you done with Victor? It's not real obvious.
You know, there has been a lot of change. Victor is a very interesting community, as I'm sure you guys are aware, and they're, they'd be your closest neighbor, Main Street neighbor. They've been in the program for about two years. They've hired staff, and they've really have listened to us and followed a lot of our recommendations, and they'll probably be moving up to a designated community this year. They had their first annual signature event, and their promotions. They've made significant investment into their downtowns. They've reworked their codes and, and zoning regulations. They are, they're always working towards bigger success. The big thing that, the reason why they're going to be able to move up is because the town has really wrapped around this. They've done, the past couple summers, they had a facade squad where they went and painted several of the buildings. They recently just painted the facade of the Miners Union Hall, and it looks loads better. It's, it's a small win. It's to revitalize some of those needs. It, it doesn't happen overnight. It's very much a long commitment. I, I like to say that the Main Street program, downtown revitalization, it's, it's about a 20-year, it took 20 years to get things to where they are in a lot of our downtowns. It takes the same amount of time to really start seeing results, and it's a constant management of it from there out. So, if you're, it's, it's a commitment. I also like to say that there's a 24-hour economy of a downtown. You want to get your, during the day, you want to have your services and your restaurants going, then you have your, you know, your early evening, people with families that come to dinner, and then you have your late night. So, they're also working, Victor's also working towards that as well, kind of keeping their businesses open beyond 5:00. So, they're, they're small successes.
And a big change in Victor over the last two years is, I don't know if it's part of, I know it's DOLA, I don't know if it's out of the Main Street program or not, but, you know, they've really done a lot of work on their sidewalks and curbing, and, I mean, big changes down there relative to, it used to be risky to walk down the sidewalks, and there's really made great improvements down there.
It's, it's one of those, they were talking about earlier, it's the synergy that's created from it. Being part of the Main Street program does not adversely affect your relationship with DOLA, I could say that. It definitely, it doesn't promise any more impact energy grants or anything like that, but it certainly does help solidify the relationship going forward. We're kind of, we're, we want to build all of our communities up, and that's our team that tries to raise that level and to that bar for our communities.
Yes, Kim.
All the communities that you've shown on the map there earlier, in terms of, I hate to call it return on investment, but, you know, we are thinking about making an investment in this venture. What would be your best example of a success story in some of these communities as to what it did for the community? What, what are the people of our community and those communities, what are they getting out of our effort to make this happen? What's the benefit?
You know, every community is different, and every community has their own set of assets and their own sets of challenge. I would say, by and large, it does start to build that consensus. You do start to, you could use, I'll start with Lake City. That's a good example. One of the, through the, the Main Street process, they decided to come up with their first signature event, and I don't know if you've heard of the Lake City Uncorked. It's a one-day music and wine festival. And what they noticed, because there's so many second homeowners in the town, that people were leaving, right? That first frost, they were packing up and headed back to Texas. Probably, they're mostly Texas. It's, it's a true story. So, in order to keep some of those, and then their businesses would have to, you know, in turn, kind of shut down for the winter as well and everything. Their economy stopped. That was it. That was it. So, what they decided to do through this process, and being a part of the, the program, is to extend their shoulder season by strategically scheduling their uncorked a couple weeks into their shoulder season. And what it did is it kept those second homeowners there going to the businesses a few weeks longer. It brought new people into the community, giving a little bit more fat for those business owners to get through the winter. And then they raised money for their program. This, this one event, annual event, very successful, raises about 50% of their operating funds for the, for the year. Additionally, other nonprofits, the volunteer firefighter passes the boot around to get donation. Turns out, when people are relaxing, listening to music, they're a little bit more, little bit more generous, pass, giving money. So, they, they typically raise anywhere from $5,000 to $7,000. So, it's just one of those, those synergies that, small win is nothing that you would, you would know the ins and outs of unless you just heard this story, but it does kind of help their businesses get through winter. It's that little extra edge is, is one example. Every community has a little different story.
But you're suggesting that without the Main Street program, they would have never figured that out on their own?
I like to think, no. They probably would have. You know, they're, they're pretty smart people, but it was through the process and through their assessment and through the continual technical assistance that they really grew it and were strategic about it, and really started that sitting down and that, that back and forth without outside expertise that they arrived at that conclusion, probably a little bit quicker.
Yes.
So, throughout the presentation, I heard the word "you." You guys do this, you guys do that. Can you explain to me who the "you" is and, you know, how you interact with all the different business owners and the Chamber of Commerce, and obviously, the bigger the community, the more difficult that could be, I guess?
Well, it's, it's, that's a very, that's a very good question. The "you" is, is different in every community as well. There's lots of different organizational structures. We have, throughout Colorado, we have 501(c)(3)'s running the Main Street program. We have city governments running the Main Street program. We have chambers, DDAs, URAs, any kind of combination and layers thereof. We, our Tim, Shay, and I, with DOLA, help provide that technical assistance. We also have a network of various consultants that we pull in. Sometimes it's DCI, sometimes it's other state agencies to help problem-solve specific issues in that community. It depends. Like I said, every, every community's a little bit different, and we really start to identify what that is through the assessment. So, we, it's hard to say what, what the best approach is for Woodland Park here tonight. It's really through that assessment, we kind of discover and, and, and dig a little bit deeper, and we have that opportunity to figure out what those issues could potentially be and how to address them.
Yes, Bob.
Yeah. Perhaps Gary will answer this question, but I thought that we already had some core groups being set up to do this. I know Steve wants, I think.
That's a good lead-in, Bob.
Okay.
Yeah, let's let Gary, who's from Councilmen, Bob.
As Eric pointed out, we've already done some grassroots efforts and are beginning to formulate an advisory, a board, an organizational board. That's the organizational concept, and we're trying to fill the various committees in with stakeholders. And that means people who've been excluded before are now going to be included, and that's the big point of this thing. Provides an organizational structure for all stakeholders. That could be businesses, it could be artists, it could be a whole bunch of people who have an interest in this, have a stake in this, this process. That's the "you." It's bringing everybody into the grassroots level.
It's the community.
And that's exciting. And we have a number of people who are very excited about this process. We've already met several times now with a group, about eight people who are going to be part of the advisory. We're breaking that down to various committees, the Promotion Committee and Development Committee and Economic Development Committee and, and the other one, I forgot, oh, the Design Committee. They're all very important, and the intent is, you have a chamber involved in the example. Chamber will be involved in publicity as well as, as a couple of other aspects of the program. And the high school will be involved. Just about anybody we can get involved in this thing, we're going to do that. And that's the job of the organizational committee is to, is to get people involved in this whole process. So, it's truly a grassroots effort, because unless you have a grassroots effort, I don't think it's going to work. You've got to have support from a lot of people. And I think it will work. The only question I have is, do we have to wait two years to become a designated?
Oh, they tie it down.
Could we do it in a year? Because I think we have, what I'm able to deserve now, we've got the talent and the people in this community that, right now, that are willing to probably start this effort.
Well, and I, from what I heard from her, her talk was that, as we work through this and we do that, those, that two-day assessment.
Yeah.
That's what you'll really come up with. So, kind of what's the next thing that we're going to see happen?
Well, we're going to get that organizational focus, and the next thing I'm going to get you guys to do, hopefully.
You guys being?
City Council.
Okay.
There's going to be a resolution presented to you February 5th, designating your support of a, and that's one of the requirements that you have, support of the Colorado Downtown Main Street program.
Okay.
So, that's going to be a resolution. That starts things off. Our committee's right in the process of being organized right now, so you've got to be pointing a board, because the board will be coming up, and it's not like you've got to solicit names, we already have them.
Okay.
And then you'll come up here and approve the board. That's buy-in from City Council. That's what you guys are looking for.
Okay.
The advantage of this program is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I've done a lot of research on this thing, but, you know, I look at it as it brings the grassroots level up and form a, a revitalization of our downtown district. And it could mean the survival of our downtown district, as a matter of fact. I've talked to several people at Main Street programs. In fact, that's the case.
Okay.
It meant the survival of their, their organization, who were losing businesses and stuff like that. Needs to attract business and tourists, and, and also be able to provide a quality of life for our own residents here and have a focus where they can actually get entertainment and, and get all the things that Main Street is able to provide.
Well.
Now, it also provides us legitimacy and status, so we get recognition at the state level. Now, why is that important? Because we get recognition at the state level, we get a couple of things from that. We maybe have, we maybe have access to funding opportunities we haven't had before, from foundations and from state-level agencies. Plus, you know, being recognized at the state level is a good thing because if we want to tell Woodland Park's story, what better way to tell it is at the state level. And from then on, you can expand out nationally and internationally.
Okay. And then, um...
Did I say that right, just about, or?
I couldn't have said it better.
So, I would say, as, as we move forward, you know, we look forward to those steps and, and, and those processes, and should be good. I mean, I think it's a good thing. Yes, Bob?
Yeah. Just to clarify next steps, there will be a city contribution towards this two-day assessment. Is that going to be included in the resolution that we would also commit to providing?
The resolution we require, when the letters of intent are due, are a little bit separate. So, you'll probably have to approve the budget to, to do the assessment prior to the scheduling and all that sort of thing. And then, when the letters of intent do, you're also, you're just saying you support that efforts as well. We don't, Department of Local Affairs works closely with local governments, and we want to make sure that you guys are in board and supportive of any program that we're endorsing.
But this assessment would then follow that?
Yes. So, it would be the assessment first, resolution, and then resubmitting your letter of intent on July 1st.
Okay. The resolution's going to be written somewhat general. We don't want to give a dollar figure to anything, say that, you know, the City Council agrees to provide financial assistance, as well as administrative assistance through the Economic, Office of Economic Development to support the program. And, and so that's what's going to be in that resolution. So, you'll have an opportunity to look at that before, hopefully I'll get that out to you before the 5th, that presenting. Because I have one other thing I've got to present to you, and that's Creative Arts District. There's another resolution to be presented that night by Creative Arts District, too. And they fold hand in hand with one another, as Stephanie might suggest.
Sure. We, we work pretty closely with Margaret Hunt, who is the executive director of the Creative, Colorado Creative Industries. We have two communities that are both Main Street and Creative Districts. We're learning how the programs work better together. We've kind of waived our reporting requirement so that for our Main Street, we'll just borrow CCIs to kind of streamline that process. There really is that synergy. We want that creative class to be in downtown. It's very logical. So, we have a lot of the creative, excuse me, the creative industry consultants work with us on, on our year-end visits and our downtown assessments and our annual work planning. So, we're always merging those two programs together and always being mindful how to make it easier for you. Yes, we're from the government and here to help.
Okay. I would suggest that we sort of wrap this up. We've got a lot of stuff to cover tonight.[1730.33] We've discussed this. There will be a lot more actions to be taken. You've laid the groundwork for us tonight. The DDA, Brian and Gary will be working this. But I would suggest that we kind of wrap this up for tonight and unless there's something hot to be said, that we move on to the next agenda item.
Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And drive carefully going to Trinidad. We'll move on to item 4C. We're going up with the new building department. And the way we're working it here in Woodland Park now, we need to appoint members to the City of Woodland Park Board of Appeals. And walking us through that is going to be our Director of Planning and who's been our key person for working this, Sally Riley.
Thank you. This is the first item dealing with establishing our new building department. This evening, we'll be dealing with two other items. But first, we have had an ad hoc advisory committee working with the Planning Department to help establish the new building department. And on that committee, we're the seven folks who have volunteered and stepped forward to be on our Board of Appeals. Included on that committee, however, were Jim Olson and Debbie Miller. So I want to recognize and thank them for their assistance over the last couple of months to help us put this together. So this evening, we are recommending to appoint five regular members and two alternate members. Some of those folks are here this evening. So we have Gary Crane, who is recommended for a one-year term. Steve McCann, who is an electrician, licensed electrician, two years. Dave Durnbach, who is an architect, local architect here in town. Monty Hausman.
Now, Dave Durnbach, what would be that term?
That term is for two years.
Okay.
Monty Hausman will be for a three-year term. She is a local home builder. And then Dick Carpenter also drew a three-year term. And he is a commercial and residential contractor. For the alternate members, we have Jeff Cahill for a one-year term. And Jeff is a sign contractor. And then Mac McVicker, who will have a two-year term as an alternate, and he's a retired engineer. So we have a great group of seven folks who have volunteered for this job. Their first order of business will be to create rules and procedures for the Boards of Appeals. And we will be working closely with Todd Welsh, who is the attorney for Regional Building Department. And we will establish a schedule of monthly meetings in order that we will be available for assistance with variances, appeals, and issues with licensed contractors.
It sort of sounded from, as you were going through the listing of individuals, and of course, we've received their application and backgrounds and detailed information that we've been able to review in advance. So these individuals volunteered and then was there like a drawing or something to see length of terms? It almost sounded that way.
Yes, we drew them out of a hat to assign the length of terms.
And the individuals that we're all looking at here have all bought into that?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, John?
Can we vote by acclamation?
We can. Yes.
So moved?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the, let me get the official title right. The Woodland Park Board of Appeals. And as presented by Sally with the terms and positions as presented in this meeting, any discussion, any questions from council?
I would just say, thank you.
Yes, very much so. Hearing no questions?
That's ordinance 1198, correct.
No. Nope.
Just an appointment. 1198's a different issue.
Yeah. Okay. Then we will take a vote.
Thank you. Rovetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
And I'd just like to add, you know, in addition to the service that you all are going to be doing, appreciate the work that you've done in helping pull this all together. You are the experts in working with Regional Building and with Planning Department and staff. Greatly appreciated what you've done to help pull this all together in a short period of time. It's great.
Mayor Turley, I am prepared to administer the oath of office to those who are here tonight.
Let's do that.
So will Gary, Jeff, and Mac join me at the podium, please? Raise your right hands if you repeat after me. I, Stephen, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Colorado, the Charter and ordinances, of the City of Woodland Park, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Board of Appeals upon which I'm about to enter. Just need some signatures. Jeff? Thanks for volunteering. Thanks for your help. Mac?
Gary, we just keep getting you on more and more things.
It's only a one-year term. I've got a mayoral race to prepare for.
Yeah, I know. I was just thinking, we've got a couple of mayors here tonight. Maybe they're showing up, they want to run again, I don't know. Moving on to, I think, thank you all very much. Appreciate it. And moving on to item 5. Cindy, do we have some changes, deletions?
We just have the addition. Council will recall that our last meeting, we heard from Mr. and Mrs. Carley concerning a request for payment for damages for their fourplex from water damage. And council deferred that to this meeting. And so we would hear that right after we hear 7A, which is unfinished business.
Okay.
City manager will guide us through that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. And for that, we will turn to Cindy for item A. And I believe, you're going to cover B, too, or is Sally going to do that?
Sally's going to cover B if there are questions.
Okay.
There are two. Read them into the record. That's to approve the amendments of the November 21 council meeting. And then a request to approve a grant contract with the Colorado State Historical Fund to complete a reconnaissance and survey for 30 historical structures within our community. Amount of $14,400, 75% grant-funded, 25% city match. What questions may Sally or I answer for?
Any questions? Hearing none, entertainer motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
And moving on to item 7A is unfinished business. That's considering Resolution 766 to adopt the building department fees. And for that, we're turning to Sally once again.
Thank you. The building department fees were presented to you last month. And there was a request to provide comparisons between what is being proposed in Resolution 766. The Regional Building Department has agreed to service our building services at these rates and compare to what previously the Teller County Building Department was charging for building services. That has been provided to you for a single-family home, a basement finish. We also shared the comparison for the Charis Bible College as well as two other commercial projects, Tractor Supply Company and the Trail Ridge Apartments. There are eight buildings which are starting at this time. So with that, we recommend that you adopt these fees. Those comparisons did show that the residential construction will be pretty significantly less than the charges that Teller County has. The commercial projects are somewhat less. In this exercise, we do have one change that Henry is willing to do, which is with the commercial permits. The plan review fee is proposed to be a 65% charge of the building permit. He is willing to do that now for 55% of the building permit fee. So that is a change to Table DH. The 65 will be changed to 55%. So with that, Henry Yankowski, our head building official, is here this evening, as well as Todd Welsh. If you have any questions of us, otherwise, we recommend that you approve Resolution 766.
Any questions, discussion? Yes, Eric.
I'll just say, since I was the one that asked for this to be done, I would like to thank the staff and Regional Building for going through the process. I appreciate that. I think I'm satisfied with that we went through and looked at it. And now, if we have constituents that ask a question, I can say, yes, the fees are less than what had been charged, as you had indicated. And I appreciate it. I'm glad you guys are coming to Woodland Park. I'm very glad for all of the hard work that's gone on in the last two months to pull all of this together, as the mayor had said earlier, and all of the folks that have been involved in trying to make this happen in a very, in a tough situation. So I just want to say thank you. I'm sorry that you had to come up here for one more night. Wanted to make sure you could drive up here in the snow and you passed the test, so. But anyway, I wanted to state that for the record since I was the one that requested that that analysis be completed.
And I'll just say, from my point of view, I found it interesting going through and looking at the comparison. I don't know what to say more than that, but I did find the numbers interesting between Teller County and what the fees are now. Any questions? Thank you all very much.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 766 adopting the building department fees.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 766 to adopt the building department fees. Any further discussion? We will take a vote.
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 8, ordinances on initial posting. We don't have any.
Recall that we had in addition
Oh, I'm sorry.
Under unfinished business.
I drew a line in and I missed it.
That's fine.
So we'll talk about the Carleys and the water issue.
Yes, sir.
And for that, we'll turn to David.
Thank you. Recall that last meeting, we talked a bit about the situation that arose with the water main break adjacent to an apartment building that the Carleys own. You'll recall they came to the last meeting. You'll recall that I committed to provide them $5,000 for damages that occurred to their property. They were, had the opportunity to pick up that check the next day, as I had indicated that we would have it ready. As far as I know, that check has yet to be picked up. The Carleys did come back to me some days later, prior to Thanksgiving, though, and said that the total estimate for repairs, based on the SIRSa expert, was around $46,000, plus or minus. And they felt that they could do the work themselves with the purchase of materials of about $18,500. And they asked for that amount to be given to them based on receipts so that they could then do their repairs, not in addition to the $5,000, but as a total, that they would complete that work. I sent that information out to the council. I did not get definitive guidance as to do that. That's why we're bringing this back before you this evening so that we can make a decision and advise the Carleys accordingly.
Yes, John?
I think the council made a generous offer of the $5,000 to the Carleys. There's some information we've learned after that meeting with them with respect to the other rental units that they own, as well as, I understand, a retail outlet in Manitou Springs or Old Colorado City. I mention that because this is, in effect, I view it as an enterprise or a company they own and they ought to be able to absorb losses as well as use the profits. I am not in favor of giving them $18,500. My primary concern is setting a precedent. And the city attorney told us at the last meeting that this would in no way waive our city government immunity. However, I think they ought to be responsible for these kinds of things that naturally happen to those who own properties, as we've all experienced ourselves. So I vote no. Stick with the $5,000.
Yeah, well, I kind of take a vote on that. But we'll, yes, Eric, see how the people think.
Yeah, I'll jump in here with John. I think it's a very difficult situation and I, it would be very difficult to deal with. Based on what I understand, this, you do have quite a business, which is great. Relates to a lot of different properties and whatnot. There's a certain amount of sophistication that goes along with that, unlike maybe somebody who just owns one piece of property. So I agree with John. I apologize, or I feel bad for your situation. I think we have to look at not just your situation, but other potential situations down the line. And I'm comfortable with what conclusion was reached at the last meeting. And my feeling would be to continue forward with that approach.
Yes, Carol.
And I agree both with Eric and John. Our recommendation to provide the Carleys with $5,000 was based on a good neighbor policy. And in terms of what the Immunity Act provides the city, I think that's even above and beyond that. But I would, for the record, like Erin to explain what the Immunity Act does for a small town.
Any town.
Yeah, any, any town.
Small, broke town.
Yeah. What the state legislature did back in, I think, the mid-'70s, early-'80s was to take a bunch of court decisions and winnow those down to a policy that they adopted by law and made law in the state of Colorado. And that was to recognize that cities have complete immunity with respect to any damage caused by most of the sort of actions that have to do with city facilities. And that included in that would be the city's water facilities. So the, you know, what the legislature did as a matter of policy was to say, we understand that if cities were strapped with the risks of having to pay after the fact for all these damages, that their water rates would necessarily have to be, you know, much higher. Other charges that the city would charge would necessarily have to be much higher. So, you know, they tried to strike a balance based on the court decisions that had come before them. And some of those court decisions were at odds, but that was the balance that they struck.
Any other council members? Yes, Bob?
Thank you. Yeah, I recognize the urgency of trying to come to a conclusion on this when you sent out your email asking everybody's advice or where they stood on this. But I think it was valuable that we heard from each other because our opinions can change when we hear other additional information, for instance, as John raised. So I'm going along with those that have spoken thus far that this is just a goodwill gesture, not intended to compensate them fully for what it's going to cost them to fix this, that they are sophisticated investors on properties. And this, as Eric said, should be part of their knowledge basis. So I'm inclined to go with this with the $5,000.
What is our action now, Erin? Regardless of the decision we make, whether it's $18,500 or $5,000, what happens now? My strong recommendation is that the approval of this be on your agenda in the form of a resolution[1788.16] the form of the release that the city would be getting in exchange for that goodwill, our good neighbor, payment. And that could be prepared for your next meeting.
Would that include the compensation that city manager wanted to make to the tenants as well?
That is, that could be handled separately, but also there will be, as we had stated the last minute, there would be releases for that as well. That would give us time, too, to make sure that the resolution is set up, so that the release is signed by the right parties. We would want the parties in interest, who would be the owners of the property, to make sure that, you know, this, this may be owned by a corporate entity or a partnership entity. So, we'd want to make sure that the right entity was signing that release.
So, what is the action we'll take tonight?
It sounds like what we need to do is, we, we just, through a consensus, give guidance to the staff to work up a resolution for the next council meeting. And what I'm hearing is that, if not, at least from four of the members, I would just say, originally, my, my thinking was to pay the $18,500. But I, at the same time, said, I, I really need to have that discussion with council. I mean, you know, you have one idea in your own mind, but, but, you know, having that discussion, it sounds like we, we have a consensus in moving forward with the $5,000 that was offered to both the Carlys and also to the individual tenants. But you'll need to work out all the details of that for that resolution. Does that sound?
Yes.
So, you're doing it on the $5,000, not on the $18, right?
Say that again?
You're doing this on the $5,000, not on the $18.
Correct.
Okay.
Knot of heads?
Yes.
Okay. David, what do you need else from us? You have that look?
Well, I do, because I'm, first of all, thank you for the discussion and the guidance, I understand. I'm now thinking pragmatically on how to move forward in a timely fashion. If we're successful this evening in closing the books on our 2014 budget, then currently we have no need to meet the second meeting in December, which means that we would not meet back again as a council until January 2nd of 2014. And what I'm understanding, if we need a resolution in order to prepare the check, I'm, I'm thinking that that's a month away. And I'm, we have a release prepared, based on, on your, your guidance. We, we have all those, those kinds of documents done. I'm not sure what the risk is to allow the check to be given with that, those done, and then council could, we could do the resolution almost in arrears.
I, I think that's up to the city attorney's advice.
Okay.
I mean, so, if Erin has something different, some other thought, I mean, I, I understand that we're trying to move this along expeditiously, and I'd like to see us do that as well, but I'm going to rely on Erin's thoughts here.
I think the city could do, the city council could do that, approval tonight, and even formalize it by a ratification of a resolution on your consent agenda.
Why don't, why don't we just do that? Why don't we take a motion to approve and, and do a vote? And, and then, and also include in that motion that, that it will, we'll follow that with the formal resolution.
Would we have to amend the, or the ordinance that we're going to consider tonight for the 2014 budget?
That's going to be a $13,000 expense.
Yes, but that, that could be done, almost depending on change.
Okay.
And that would be really out of the 2013 budget, wouldn't it?
That's true.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, but, but your point is well taken, because we're also doing a supplemental appropriation for the 2013.
Yeah.
So, Kelly, I think what we could do is just do a footnote on the supplemental appropriation. Just nod the head. You don't need to make your way up here, because I, you're.
I would say that we would, at the podium, amend the, or the schedule for the supplemental appropriation.
Okay.
Tonight. Yeah.
With a motion.
Okay.
Yes, Bob.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want some clarification. Last time we met, we agreed you could cut a check for $5,000 that they could pick up the next day. We didn't have an ordinance or anything like that. We just said, do it. What's the difference now? Why do we need an ordinance when last?
It's not an ordinance.
Resolution.
Resolution. We knew we didn't need it two weeks ago.
I believe that we were trying to do something in an expeditious fashion, and we've had time to think through the process. I think the same thing would have occurred had we presented the check on the Friday after that last meeting. We would have made an amendment to the supplemental appropriation document that you're going to see tonight.
Okay. So, can we get a motion to move forward on this?
Do we need a motion?
I thought that's what we said.
Okay.
Yep.
Are we moving for a resolution or moving for?
Moving to have the city staff go ahead and, and write those checks for the $5,000, add the appropriate paperwork which they've got on, be signed, and that we actually do a resolution on it at the next city council meeting, where it lays it all out in writing. We all get to see it.
So, moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Yes, John.
One question. Are both of the, those who were renting those lower two units still around, still in town?
One, one family is, is back and forth between Kansas, and the other is still here. We're in dialogue, excuse me, with them.
All right. So, we're, you know, relying upon your discretion and working through this. You're the city manager, and we think you're in a position, and, and any issues that come up, you'll talk with Erin, and, and we'll move forward.
Absolutely.
Okay. We'll take a vote.
Then the motion is to approve the distribution of the $5,000 with signatory release and other documentation, and ratified by resolution at your next meeting.
Okay.
Matthews?
No.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-1.
Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. You know, I wish I'd said this before they departed. It is, I mean, I think we all have a lot of feelings about such issues that occur, and, I mean, unfortunately, it's a part of life, and, and these things do have, there was no awareness of the potential of something happening beyond just, these things do happen. And you don't always know. It's not like there was repeated warnings and negligence or anything, so I just hate that it's happened to them. I hate that it happened to anybody, but I think we've made the decision that we had to make. It's just my comment. Let's move on to, we have no ordinances on initial posting.
Correct.
We have several public hearings. I'll read a couple of things before we start. Please note that council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is a common practice of this city council, that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during public hearings. And that's just to ensure you know that we're not receiving any inputs from any outside sources that would impact and affect our decision-making during a public hearing. And for item 9A, which is considering ordinance number 1198, and I'm going to leave all that description to Sally, because it's a lot.
It is a lot. What you are about to do is, ordinance 1198, is to repeal and reenact Title 15. Title 15 is our building construction chapter, and it, what we are doing here this evening is adopting the international codes that are part of the regional building code. You're adopting the regional building code that Mr. Yankowski is here to answer any questions regarding that code. And we do have a few exceptions to the code that are unique to Woodland Park and this area. I'm not going to review through the entire ordinance. You've had a chance to see this on a couple times, but after the public hearing, I would recommend that you approve ordinance 1198. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any other questions for Sally, or any questions? No, I think we've had a good chance to go through that and review it, and I think we're in good shape on that. I'll go ahead and open the floor for any public comment on this item. Hearing none, I'll close the public comment period. Any final questions from council?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 1198.
Second. Have a motion and a second, approve ordinance 1198. And Sally, we're very glad that you did bring out the big book. If there's no further discussion, we'll take, yes?
But just a point of clarification, do we have to repeal something before we approve this?
No, it's included in this ordinance.
In the, yeah, it's in the ordinance. Okay? Then we'll take a vote.
Thank you. Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Very good. Thank you, Sally, and thank you, council. Move on to item 9B, which is a request for approval to take the two, the different sections of the sanctuary final plat and, and create one large lot. And for that, we're also going to turn to Sally. This must be Sally Riley Knight at the city council.
This is, this is the sanctuary, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Can you just make Kyle come up and give a presentation?
I do have a brief presentation, and before I begin, though, with the PowerPoint, I would like to welcome back to the council chambers Larry Bozeman, who is Andrew Womack's general manager, operating manager, Kyle Campbell, who is the engineer for the project, and Bill Tibbet, who is the owner's representative. They have put together an amazing team to be able to pull off as much construction and work, both below ground and above ground, for the last year and a half.
And we're getting to know these guys pretty well.
We are. So, with that, I'll bring you back to June 7th of 2012, and at that time, the final development plan for the planned unit development for Charis Bible College and the 147-acre site was approved by city council. And along with the final development plan, there was a preliminary plat that was also approved, that laid out the infrastructure and the proposed development in the first phase. Now, we are at the stage where a final plat is required to be recorded prior to the certificate of occupancy for the first building, which is fast approaching. And tonight, with the approval of the final plat, then it will be recorded here shortly and meet that condition. As I mentioned, quite a bit of work has been done. The gatehouse, the entrance and exit to the sanctuary is nearly complete, and will be a very welcoming entrance to their private, this is a private road, although there are public improvements underground with the water and sewer improvements, so there are easements that are associated with this private drive. Here is their main building, 76,000-square-foot building, that they have coined as the barn, and it will include the classroom space, as well as the large banquet hall and worship area. These photos were taken about a month ago, so I'm sure they've made huge progress since then. The infrastructure that was installed included water mains, sewer mains, the dry utilities for electric, gas, and phone, private roads, the erosion and sediment control areas, as you can see the blankets here, culverts, and drainage facilities. This is the detention pond, the primary detention pond, that sits about halfway into the site. And then there were also some off-site improvements that were associated with Trout Creek Road. So, there was some widening at the intersection of Highway 24 to accommodate a left-turn lane, a dedicated left-turn lane, as well as a second lane that could be in any direction, right, straight ahead, or left. And then a dedicated left-turn lane at Gospel Truth Way off of Trout Creek Road. They had environmental and open space protection. We even caught some deer crossing the road here in the photograph, but the ponds are in great shape. They have also completed a fire mitigation plan that has been reviewed by the fire chief and the staff here, so that was part of their requirement prior to CO. The final plat contains four sheets. The front sheet includes the standard legal description and certification and notes. The second sheet is a overall view of the entire site. And then sheet two, three, is a more detailed description of primarily the easements. I do want to point out as well, we discovered that a portion of their legal description as deeded did encroach into the Trout Creek Road right-of-way. So, they are deeding to the city through this, or dedicating to the city through this plat, a portion of Trout Creek Road. We do have the title insurance policy that was submitted for this area. It's about an acre and a half of area, so that cleans up that issue. And, oops, the last one was supposed to be the west side of the plat, but you have that in your packet. I just copied the wrong one into this PowerPoint. So, since the planning commission meeting, Kyle has had the surveyor finish up all the final corrections to the plat, and we do recommend that you move to approve this sanctuary final plat this meeting, tonight, based on the staff findings. After the public comment, we're recommending approval.
Okay. Any questions for Sally?
One question. Early on, we talked about another egress route. Was, was that possible?
What we have is an emergency ingress/egress that is platted off of Vista Lane. Is that the one that's currently gated? It is gated, and the, the fire department will be able to have access.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Anything the applicant would like to present? Okay. Then we'll, yes, John.
When is the CO expected?
I think I'd rather let Bill Tibbet, he's on top of Teller County's inspections and where the project's at at this point. Come on up.
See, Bill, we just had to get you up here.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
Bill Tibbet.
Okay. And your position?
Owner's representative for Charis Bible College. We expect to get a, a temporary occupancy by December 18th, for the staff to come and set up their offices and begin to set up classrooms. January 6th is the intended date. January 5th would be the date for our final CO, first day of class being January 6th, 2014.
Wow.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open the floor for any public comment at this time? Anyone? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment. Any final questions for Sally? Yes, Eric.
I'd just like to make a comment. I've had the opportunity to go out and take a look in the last, I don't know, two or three weeks of what's been going on, and it's just amazing, you guys have really protected the environment, built a tremendously top-notch. You guys have really protected the environment, built a tremendously top-notch project, and I am very glad that you're part of our community and appreciate what you're doing here and your desire to protect the property, but also develop a high-end project. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
Appreciate that. And I'll just add, I haven't been out for several months, and so I'll be out there on Monday, so I'm looking forward to that and, you know, seeing the changes that have occurred and, you know, it's great. Yes, Bob?
Just mentioning, I guess Monday is the open house, so I'll be there, too. Well, can I move to approve then?
Absolutely.
I move to approve the sanctuary final plat based on the findings of the staff report.
Okay. Second. Have a motion of second to approve the sanctuary final plat. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Thank you. Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks for being here tonight. Move on to item 9C, approve ordinance 1199, and for that, we're going to turn to our director of finance, Kelly Case.
Thank you, Mayor. You all have had an opportunity to review this on first reading. There's been no changes to the budget for ordinance 1199, and it does agree with the document we've been exploring for the past few meetings. So without further ado, and unless there's any questions, staff and after the public hearing, staff would recommend approval of this ordinance.
Okay. And just a little procedural thing, what I'd like to do is, we had it in the first reading, it's the same thing we did with last year's budget. After we have -- go through the process here, what I would like to see happen would be a motion to approve as submitted, and then if anybody wants to see any changes, they would go through a process of describing what you'd like to see changed, line item by line item, that we have a motion for that change and a second and a vote on any change, that way we know clearly what the changes are and it's very clear to everyone, and especially to the staff as to what they need to do. So any questions at this point? We've had a -- just for the public and the people, everyone that's listening in, we've spent the last couple of months, the staff has been working for months and months on this, but on council, we've worked through this with the staff over the last several months, line item by line item, and so we've had many opportunities to expound on things and question them. So at this point, I would ask if council has any questions for Kelly. Hearing none, then I'll open the floor for any public comment on the 2014 budget. Hearing none, I'll close the floor for public comment. And any final questions for Kelly? Yes, Bob?
Yeah, I do have a few comments.
Are they changes that you want to see or just comments?
It could involve some changes. There are several.
Okay, then again, I want to do each change as an amendment to a motion. So right now, my preference would be to entertain a motion for approval of the budget, get a second, and then during the deliberation, if you have any changes you want to make, if you talk about those and make a motion for that change. That would be my preference.
Yeah, and I would just say if he has some general comments he wants to make, that's fine.
Yeah, but as long as if it's got changes, I just don't want to see us getting in and making changes wholesale so that it's confusing as to what numbers we have.
No, it's a general comment, as Eric was saying, which could result in changes, because I'm going to ask our city manager as to how he arrived at certain decisions based on those general comments.
Okay, and these are things that we haven't discussed previously for some reason.
We have not discussed this previously.
Okay.
Okay. As you recall, earlier this year, I raised questions with regard to using the Street Capital Improvement Fund for operation and maintenance expenses. To assure myself that I had valid concern, I raised the issue with the office of the state auditor, who in turn passed the question to the Department of Local Affairs. While acknowledging that, quote, "The questions you have posed," have posed are apt, the DOLA representative recommended that I ask our city attorney to provide her legal opinion addressing these specific issues, which I have done. And I've coordinated with Aaron, and so the important thing here is that we have talked about this perhaps in workshops before, but from what I can find, there's nothing on the record as to, in any minutes, as to the legal opinion on this issue. So I would ask Aaron to go ahead and make her statement.
Before you do that, I'm going to make a comment. I understand where you're coming from. I'm going to tell you, having been on council before you were on council, the council went through this. We've reviewed this during previous budget sessions, so previous councils have discussed it. This council in work sessions has discussed it, and I think, you know, you still have the questions, but I -- my feeling was that the other six were comfortable with what we were doing, even from a legal point of view. So it's just, you know, a comment.
Yeah. My point was that one of the comments from DOLA was that this kind of thing should be on the record.
And that's fine?
And so I'm happy with her comment.
And in fact, if that brings it to a conclusion
Yes.
in our discussions, and it's the last time we keep going over it, then I think that's a good idea.
That's what I'm trying to accomplish here.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The -- as I advised past councils in 2011, and when the question came up about the use of the 410 funds, I advised council then that there was nothing that council had -- that was proposed in that 2011 budget. That was contrary to the law, as I had researched it up to that time. And so, you know, that is still my understanding. I've not found a case that would support a contention contrary. And in fact, the cases that I have looked at, although the research hasn't been recent, do result in a jurisprudence or a line of decisions whereby courts have given broad discretion to city councils, when city councils are acting in their legislative capacity to make decisions on spending based on what certain tax questions or voters had voted on with respect to how to use those funds. And in fact, those cases give a broad enough discretion that they have even encapsulated notions that circumstances change from time to time and conditions change from time to time, and so councils sitting here today in 2013 are looking at a set of circumstances and conditions and making spending decisions based on those. So again, I think, you know, what this budget presents for use of the 410 funds is permissive. And certainly, if council, as they move forward, would like to have further research or further work done to maybe allay what I think is really a policy discussion, in other words, some difference of opinion on what those different budget expenditures, whether they fall into one category or another for future purposes. It might be useful for council to have that research done. It might be useful for council to think about putting an ordinance in place that helps you to find exactly what the terms of that ordinance back in 1984 meant, when it said that you could use those 410 funds for the purposes specified in that ordinance.
Okay. Yes, Bob?
Thank you, and thank you for your remarks. And I appreciate this opportunity now to have it on the record, but the reason I brought that up was that I did have some questions, and with regard to how you assign certain things to the general fund and other things to the 410 account.
This is for David or Kelly or?
This is for David.
Okay.
I was talking to him. Yeah. And so this is where I would get to the point of, okay, clarification of how you made certain assignments. And so we're going to the 410 account. For example, you have in there expenditures for doing the --
Could you make reference to a page number?
Page 36. We were going to -- you're going to start doing the study for stormwater drainage. Now, in the past, when we've talked, we talked about the road being within the proper -- the boundaries of the road. So I'm just asking you to explain why would stormwater study be in this 410 account as opposed to the general fund?
Sure. First of all, when I speak of streets and roadways, I don't necessarily confine it to that, so I'm not sure exactly that reference, but it's the impacts from those roadways as well. The vast majority of our drainage that is contributed to Fountain Creek and Trout Creek comes from our roadway system, and so to me, it's a secondary effect of the roadway. When the bonds were passed in 93, I think it was 93, for the paving to occur, there was insufficient funds to do the associated drainage with the vast majority of the roadways. There were few places where Curbin Gutter was installed, inlets, drainage systems to get it to the larger drainage system. So it was contemplated at that time to include some of the drainage infrastructure, but I don't believe the funding at that time. I know, just I got here in 97 and all that work was completed by 96, but the vast majority of the drainage improvements weren't funded. There just weren't the funds to do that. So I think it's a logical carryover from the impact of the roadway onto the drainage system to allow those drainage improvements and the studies associated with those drainage improvements to come from the street fund.
Thank you. Yes, I was not aware that we hadn't completed the drainage at the time, although there are a lot of other benefits from doing the stormwater plan, like for instance, more definitively defining the flood plain, which perhaps would allow some houses that are currently in the flood plain not to be in the flood plain, that sort of thing. So was there any contemplation of having a cost share to reflect the relative benefits of the study?
Yeah, the study was not intended to have the ability to create the flood insurance maps. The study is actually, the engineering studies as it relates to hydrology and hydraulics, specifically associated with improvements to the drainage system. The letters of map revision and the conditional letters of map revision that lead to the production of the amendments to the firm maps that have an impact on insurance would be a separate issue. So the 410 fund would be for basically engineering design that would lead to construction to take care of the stormwater.
Okay. So it's anticipated then that any future drainage that would come out of the study then would be part of the 410 account, because that's part of what was authorized in the original ordinance?
I'm sorry, could you restate that?
The capital investment associated with implementing the drainage part of this would be part of that.
Correct.
Okay. Then going back --
Can I ask a question on that, just to follow up? So all stormwater wouldn't necessarily come out of 410?
No.
No, we have a separate stormwater fund. It's, I think, 330. I don't remember the number. But that went into effect in 1984. There was an ordinance associated with that that began collecting those fees, and we, in the city, when I say we, I'm referring to the city, deferred projects until 1998, when the city manager at that time felt that sufficient funds had been collected to bond for improvements. Well, a lot of that revenue that was expected was based on development, and as we know, that fell off, and so that 330 fund, the drainage fund, has been supplemented by the 410 fund for quite some years, which is legitimate and allowed. So now I've given a long answer to your short question, and I'm not sure I've really answered it.
Well, I just wanted -- I didn't want it to come across that all stormwater things that we were doing were funded out of the 410 fund.
No, that's correct. In fact, we took -- for the debt service associated with the project that was completed in 98, the funds come out of the 330 before we go to the 410.
Yeah, what I intended from my comment was, within the road right-of-way, if you needed more culverts or ditches, paving or ditches or whatever, that would be associated with drainage for the roads.
And it could be even the downstream stuff that's the result of that water that comes off of those streets and --
Correct.
Certainly, we did that with Fountain Creek, is that there was an impact of CDOC contributed money and the city contributed money because of that runoff from the roads, a major impact on those two creeks. So I understand that. I just wanted to understand some of the other stuff, too. My other question then would be, in the 410 -- or in the 100, general fund, you have some cost sharing of the -- or a street crew, okay? You were proposing that 156,000 or so, and let's go to the page, well, the street crew page, wherever that is, 156,000 of, I think it was based on the salaries of three individuals, be paid for out of the general fund, even though conceptually, we've agreed to pay O&M out of the 410 account. So I'm wondering what your logic is for having said, okay, this part of the street O&M cost operation should be part of the 410, but the other part shouldn't be, or perhaps could be sometime in the future. So if you could explain the rationale of how you came up with that cost share, that would be useful, too.
Sure. The -- I just want to correct something that you said. You said that you thought it was three crew members who were being paid for out of the 410, so I need you to erase that, because I've never said three street crew members were being paid for. What we did with the assistance of Bill Allspach and Kelly Case was take a look at the amount of effort that our streets crew was spending on effort associated with, if you will, recapitalizing the infrastructure, the street system, the roadway system, to extend the capital life of that. And so there was a percentage of effort from the streets crew as an entity. There was a percentage of effort from the director of public works. There was a percentage of effort, and by percentage of effort, I mean through a year-long, each individual or position contributed so much of their work, their yearly work effort to that recapitalization of the roadway system. So there was a very definitive percentage that was then, that cost share came from the 410 fund. There was one, the one year that you're referring to, the 156,000, also included a transfer for, I think, the Lake Avenue sidewalk or some other capital project. I believe the normal annual amount is closer to about 120,000, something like that, but the logic is the same. It was percent of effort from our public works crew members that were improving or recapitalizing the 410 assets.
And I'll just, you know, with a little historical, I'll just chime in. We had the big discussion on this, and Eric, you might be able to, or David, remind me, it was two or three years ago where we did that.
It was three years ago.
Yeah, three years ago, and we had a pretty big discussion about it on that council as to the fact that we were doing that. And I kind of liken it to going back to your previous life and, you know, and government contracts, that you might be doing work, and you're doing it under a couple of different contracts, so a certain amount of it's funded out of one contract, a certain amount's funded out of another contract. In other words, it doesn't have to be that one contract is paying the whole thing, and it's kind of like that.
Let me just ask you this question. Do you have an issue with how that allocation is occurring?
No, I just want to know how we're doing it so that future councils will know, and our council ends next April, it will have a basis for understanding how these are decision made. The problem I have is that those discussions that you had previously are not any, there are no minutes on them.
Oh, oh, absolutely. During the budget, there was.
Well, but I asked for the records. There was no records, okay?
So would you feel more comfortable, I mean, I think I heard Aaron mention that, you know, we could memorialize this if we chose that we wanted to go down this path with an ordinance that we could do next year, I guess, so we could lay all this stuff
with an ordinance that we could do next year, I guess, so we could lay all this stuff out, memorialize it, and is that what I'm hearing?
Well, certainly, I would be more comfortable with that, and I would go along with Aaron's recommendation that we follow through that, because then I could stop doing all this talking.
Well, and, you know, it could be an ordinance. I was going to actually suggest that we make sure that we capture all of this in the minutes.
Well, let me, if I could just make a couple of comments. Minutes are not intended to be verbatim records of meetings and discussions, but in the budget that this initially occurred, that was adopted by ordinance, those percentages are clearly laid out. So if we didn't provide you an answer to your question, maybe we didn't hear the right question. So the minutes would not have reflected it, but it is recorded, because you adopt a budget by ordinance. And so in the, I think it was the, either the 2010 or the 2011 budget, that has very specific percentage, I think Bill's was 4.5%, I think our street crews were 9%, pretty specific indicators of level of effort for the annual basis of recapitalizing those assets.
Thank you, yes. I mean, I looked through that, the budget, and for me, that was the end result of the discussions, not how you got to those decisions. And so I wanted to have a little record of how, what is the thinking about how you get to these decisions? So, yes, I mean, I'm perfectly willing to stop asking these questions. I mean, by asking these questions, we would in a sense have a record, but certainly it would be more comprehensive if we had this, our, Aaron check into, or provide an ordinance that would kind of document this for future references, because one of the, what the DOLA representative also said is that, that it's really important that you document your interpretations of ordinances. And, and so that's, that's in a sense what I was trying to do, so that we, we could pass this on to future councils as we, you know, as other things come up. Now, we can't cover everything in these discussions, because there will be other things that come up. But to the extent that Aaron could look at what other, other cities are doing, what the legal basis is, or whatever, then I would, you know, I couldn't stop my discussion then.
Well, and I would just, I would say that when the ordinance was passed and those percentages were done, you, those discussions had occurred amongst that council, and that was the decision that they made. What you're wanting to see, and that's really the question here, is you want to see all the deliberations that went on, so that you can validate those in your own mind. And that just doesn't exist unless we take some new and different step, because we have all kinds of discussions and deliberations, and then end up with a result that we vote on and pass.
And I think that's a good point. I mean, from a budget perspective, we've had these discussions, we've passed ordinances, we've laid out these different mechanical pieces as it relates to how this is calculated, how that's calculated. The other thing is, we could spend a lot of time crafting an ordinance that frankly, in a year or two, the next council can come in and just decide, you know what, I didn't like the way that ordinance was written, and we're going to change the ordinance, and we're going to change the way this is calculated and that's calculated. So, you know, I mean, we can't bind a future council, you know? I mean, the voters voted, that vote allowed, you know, certain things to occur underneath that ballot initiative, and we have not strayed outside of that at all. And we're well within our rights as it relates to what they allowed us to do with those dollars. And I believe that the councils, from that point to today, have been good stewards of those dollars. And so, you know, we can sit here and nitpick all we want about, you know, should it be 4.2, 3% for Bill, or 4.5? I mean, I personally don't have an issue with it. So is there something you want to change, or should we just move on and, you know, see what we can get done?
May I just offer us something in the way of the documentation that's been talked about? The finance department has a permanent record of all the calculations and everything and decisions made by staff of the numbers that are brought to you. I'm, I'm a very meticulous documenter of how things are arrived at, and substantiating the numbers in the budget, because my memory won't serve me. And that is a permanent record that is retained according to the state law and recommended practices of retaining those records. So the documentation of what is presented to the council is, exists in the form of the staff documents in preparation of the document, of the budget that you receive, if that helps.
And I would say, you know, it's, that council evaluated, made a decision in going through the budget for this, for 2014, if it was an issue as to what those percentages are, and you didn't want any of that being taken out of 410, this council could make that decision. But it would take a vote to make it happen.
Not an issue with me, let's make a motion.
You have any other things?
The only issue I had left, in a sense, with regard to how the things were allocated is, for, I mean, you just stated that you calculated that percent for the 156,000 was based on recap, what the street crew does with regard to recapitalization. I don't know that we need to make that distinction between recapitalization and maintenance, because we've been using this account for at least 10 years to do, buy vehicles, I mean, street sweepers and, and snowplows and things like that, which in a sense are maintenance. They're not capitalizing anything other than you're buying trucks, which is capital, but they're not roads. So we have been, do you want to say anything on that, as to how that, how that fits into with, with our decision to allow that to go ahead?
So are you talking about the 2014 budget, or are you talking about things down in the past?
There's a lot of money in there for our life, for trucks.
The, certainly, we have used 410 funds to purchase vehicles. The things such as street sweepers and backups and snowplows and all those kinds of things have dual purposes. The dump trucks are also used for taking care of the shoulders of the roads, to extend the life of the shoulder of the road. So I don't, I don't have a moral, legal, or ethical issue utilizing the 410 fund for the vehicles that help, again, prolong the life of the streets, or keep the, to take care of from edge of right of way to edge of right of way, and then those things that are impacted for all the things that happen within the edge of right of way to edge of right of way.
Yeah. But specifically in this budget, you have $250,000 to buy a new street sweeper.
Uh huh.
Okay? And that is not capitalization, you're just cleaning the streets, so, okay. So I was wondering, why is 410 paying for a street sweeper?
For the very reason that David just explained, it's for maintenance of the road.
And a street sweeper by definition is greater in value than $5,000, and has a life greater than one year, which qualifies as a capital asset subject to depreciation.
But the issue is not that, Kelly, it's the use of the 410 to buy that capital piece of equipment, when the general fund could have done the same thing.
Sure.
To me, it's, it still helps take care of that road. There are air quality issues, there are issues as it relates to drainage with sediment transport. So when we sweep the streets, we also do things that help not only take care of the cleanliness of the street, but we keep sediment from being sent down into the drainage systems that then requires other activities from our crews to remove the sediment and those types of things.
I'm going to actually cut Bob off for now. Gary was next in wanting the floor, so I'm going to give the floor to Gary.
I'm not any smarter as a result of this last 20-minute diatribe, so I'd like to move on.
So are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the budget.
Okay, so you're making a motion to approve the budget as submitted?
As submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second. We had the public hearing, Mayor.
Do we, I thought we did.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we did.
You're not making a part of it?
No, we sure did. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Bob?
I'm finished with that previous discussion. I've mentioned in previous meetings that I have a problem with the funding of the fleet maintenance facility, okay? This budget proposes to spend 110,000 for the design of the fleet maintenance facility. This will be followed in 2015 and on, with about a million, perhaps a little bit over a million dollars, to construct the fleet maintenance facility. I have proposed that prior to committing that these expenses, that we follow best practices for capital investment projects, namely, provide a business plan to validate the need, an approach taken to meeting the need. And then once that approach was recommended in the business plan, that we approve it and council move on. But my problem is that, in order to validate the need, the city owns like 100 vehicles, okay? That's more than the number of people we have working for the city. So that would be one thing, is do we need 100, 100 vehicles? But assuming that we do, are there more cost-effective approaches to meeting this need, okay?
I'm going to interrupt you for a second.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm looking, we have a motion on the floor to approve the 2014 budget. We have a second. I'm looking for changes to that, and what you specifically want to see happen, and if you want to see something changes in that 2014 budget, I want to hear a motion from you to amend it.
Yes, I will do that. Because there are-
Make the motion.
Consider outsourcing. The city of Colorado-
No, that's not a change to-
Okay, this is the justification, the discussion of why, why I would oppose this, okay?
Well, and you can do that. You can vote no. Make the motion, and let's get on with it. But if you want to see something else done, as far as a study goes, then, then we can do that, but it's outside of the approval of the 2014 budget.
Call the question, please.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second to approve the 2014 budget. Let's take a vote.
Are you specifically talking about 1199?
Yes.
Yes. We'll take a vote.
Thank you. Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-1.
And, and just following up, I mean, if there's things you want to see done, then that's what we do, is we work through the year, and we'll have work sessions, and you get together with David, and you work those issues, and we try to move forward.
Okay, so I'll talk to David.
Yeah. And then, and then if it's something, you know, that we need to do as council, and you think it's something that we need to change a process or a procedure, and the way we're doing that, you know, then we can do that.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay? Thank you, council. We'll move on to item 9D, which is ordinance 1200, and again, that's with Kelly.
Thank you. As we talked about earlier in this meeting, in this ordinance number 1200, supplemental to the 2013 budget, we approved a $5,000 expense that would require an adjustment to this in the general fund for the, a specific line item for the additional 5,000, to make the total adjustment to the general fund 12,700. And so in your motion, if you could include that in your, as an amendment to this ordinance?
Kelly, would it actually be 15,000?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, 15,000. Thank you, Carol.
Not that I want, but-
So that would be $22,700 amendment to the general fund, and everything else unchanged.
20, 15.
15, and the 7,700 that's already in the schedule for the amendment. So we would amend the general fund for an additional $15,000.
Beyond what was originally presented to us?
Correct.
Okay.
And staff recommends approval after holding the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions for Kelly? We'll open the floor for any public comment. Hearing none, we'll close the public comment period. Any additional questions for Kelly? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance number 1200.
Second.
And that's with the changes that-
With the amendment.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Then we will take a vote.
Thank you. Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And moving on to item 9E, is approve ordinance number 1201, repealing and then reenacting with some changes, section 18 dot 31 dot 06 of the municipal code. And for that, we're going to have Sally and Brian as desired.
Thank you, Mayor. I will start out by providing a little bit of background related to ordinance 1201. This is the section that deals with the Woodland Station overlay, the zoning aspect of that overlay, which Mr. Carlson asked about earlier this evening. And within that section of the code, 1831, it talks about specific signage for Woodland Station overlay. And in 2007, there was a desire to protect or reinforce the village feel of a very walkable urban mixed-use area, and therefore, it would respond best with specific types of signage. That code was written in such a fashion that it was fairly restrictive. It also was somewhat ambiguous in areas, so it was difficult to interpret, and therefore would be difficult to apply. Since 2007, we adopted a new sign code for Woodland Park overall. And so it makes sense to adopt the new sign code that's currently in our zoning regulations, with exceptions to that sign code that still preserves the village feel. And Brian is going to quickly review for you those exceptions and comparisons from 2007 to what we are proposing. I would like to note that the Planning Commission did review these proposals, as well as the DDA board, and they are recommending that you consider them in whole tonight and approve them. So with that-
The operative word is brief, I think, is what Sally said. I promise not to read the entire chart, but I do want to state that in replacing, we have 12 exceptions. Remember, the overlay zone was far more restrictive than even today's current city code. We didn't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but we did have a situation with Woodland Hardware that was not originally really conceived as it related to Woodland Station. All of the buildings in the original design of Woodland Station were multi-tenant. This particular building, obviously, is a single occupancy, and there really were no provisions for signage. And the existing signage, square footage, frankly, was not adequate. So, but, in the current code, which is one square foot of signage for every linear square footage of frontage of the building, that is adequate. So that was something that Sally and I worked through, again, with the DDA Design Review Committee, and also the Planning Commission. And again, all unanimous. The, I'll just go through the exceptions, because I've had some dialogue with not only the Reddarmals, who will be impacted by this, and I did have a conversation with Kelly about the type of signage as it would relate to this amendment, so he is, he was aware of that. Wall signage, there are no exceptions. Again, that is one, for every one linear foot of frontage on the building, you get one square foot of signage. And in the example of Woodland Hardware, that's approximately 155 square feet. So under the existing overlay, it's half of that. And for a large building of that size, we just don't feel that's reasonable. Same thing with multi-tenant, so there'd be no exception to the current code. Electronic and digital, EMD, as we call them, they're not permitted in the overlay currently. We would not allow them in the new code either. Detached freestanding, not permitted in the overlay. We're not, we're suggesting that it's not permitted as an exception. Backlit plastic or internally illuminated, same thing, not currently allowed in the overlay. We're suggesting that it's not permitted in this particular amendment. Window signs, in the current code, you can do, you can occupy over 100% of the window coverage. We're saying that within the, this particular code amendment, up to 25% of the window could be occupied. Temporary signs for development projects, in the current code, we allow 32 square feet. We're suggesting 16 square feet in the overlay. Flags, they're not addressed in the current overlay. It was not our intent to not allow flags, so what we agreed on is, we have a current code that regulates size and the requirements for flags, except for one particular caveat, we're saying that they're permitted with approval of the Woodland Station Design Review Committee, which is currently stated in the overlay, overlay zone now. With one flag- in the overlay, overlay zone now, with one flagpole location. Because of the density of Woodland Station, if everybody wanted a flagpole, we felt that would not be appropriate. So, we're allowing one flagpole, but we allow non-commercial flags, i.e. the American flag, state flag, et cetera, on each building, given the current signage. So, just to make that distinction. Because there was some discussion about, there's some sensitivity, obviously, about flags, and we wanted to make sure that we were consistent with the current code. Temporary signs, banners, and attention-getting devices, they're not permitted in the current 18.31, but we're saying they're allowed for special events or grand openings up to 14 days. The current city code allows 120 days. Plan Commission, DDA felt that that was not appropriate for the Woodland Station footprint. Portable sidewalk signs, we allow 16 square feet on private property and 6 square feet in the right-of-way. Within the Woodland Station overlay, we're suggesting that that number is 6 square feet for both private property and in the right-of-way. Special downtown district area locations, we allow for projecting signs and sidewalk signs in right-of-way and minimum of 25 square feet of wall signage with 12 square feet of projecting signs. What we're suggesting in the overlay is that there is not a minimum, but we allow standard wall signage and projecting signs. Regulations apply, which, again, involves back to that one linear square foot of signage for every linear foot of building frontage. The last two poster frame signs, not addressed in the current overlay. We do not allow them, as recommended in the current code. And then, the manual changeable copy, not permitted. We're suggesting they're not permitted in the current amendment. Really, the biggest impact of what we're presenting, we're recognizing Woodland Hardware. We're suggesting that the current code addresses that at one linear foot, square foot of signage. We feel that's reasonable. You know, this is a fluid process. One of the things that Sally pointed out as we went through this process is, you spent 28 months in a sign ordinance. We didn't want to replicate that, but we know that it's a process. There may be an amendment down the road that seems appropriate, but we want to work through that to see what, you know, what might make sense. But at this time, we feel this is the best course and the best representation, particularly for Woodland Hardware and as we look at other potential applications in the future. What questions can I answer from--
Yes, Carol.
So, the bottom line is, the overlay, the Woodland overlay, will basically adopt the current sign ordinance with these exceptions.
That's correct.
One question I had on portable sidewalk signs, is that a sandwich board sign or something else?
Yeah, it's, it's, and it's an A-frame, perhaps. You see a lot of them with weights on them.
And 6 square feet is going to be the new--
That's correct. That's what we're recommending.
But that's not new. That's the existing sandwich board signs downtown are 2x3.
Oh, are they?
Yes.
Okay.
The 16-square-foot ones are if they're outside of the right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
So, for example, there's one at Remax that sits way up on the hill, and so, it made sense in that scenario for them to be larger. For the DDA overlay, the Woodland Station area, everything is very close. There isn't going to be anything up on the hill, if you will.
That helps. The 2x3 now, I understand.
Yeah. We have several examples of that.
Yes, John.
Was there, or what was the extent of the research done by the Design Review Committee? Talking with other similar developments or visiting some to see what they had done as opposed to just thinking about what these impacts might be and making a judgment, subjectively?
We did. You know, for example, on backlit, there was quite a bit of discussion about that. And one of the things was we researched several communities that allow no backlit whatsoever, not just in a district, but we did look at some of the examples within Colorado, for example, of communities. Plus, this was adopted, the original overlay was adopted in 2007, I believe. And there was a lot of research done at that time relative to what, again, Woodland Station wanted something unique. They wanted a special component for signage. And so, we tried to respect that. There was a lot of research then. We did look, we're not inconsistent with many communities that have a special urban district or trying to reach out for a special design consideration.
And this is actually, for the most part, a loosening up from the 2007.
It is. It allows, and again, I go back to--
Flexibility.
Didn't really account for that 22,000-square-foot--
Yeah.
--single occupancy building within Woodland Station. So, this is an attempt to be realistic with that, again, eroding some of the impetus that went into the original overlay district.
Okay. Other questions? Hearing none, we'll open the floor for public comment. Anyone want to speak to this? Hearing none, we'll close public comment. Any final questions for Brian or Sally? Hearing none, will we entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the side ordinance as presented.
Second.
Okay. And that's ordinance number 1201.
1201.
Okay. And any further discussion? We will take a vote.
Thank you. Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Brevetto?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Any new business from CNE? Any public comment on items not on the agenda? I don't have anyone signed up. If anyone would like to speak now, it would be your opportunity. And then, we'll do mayor's report. I stay involved with Pike's Peak Area Council Governments. We have a meeting next week, kind of a follow-through that. Just kind of showing, sharing a little bit on strategizing and cooperation. I have a working session next Thursday with Mayor Bach from Colorado Springs, Mayor Snyder from Manitou Springs, Mayor Eason from Monument, and myself, and that's going to be here in Woodland Park. And just general discussions. One of the things that came up tonight that I might discuss in that meeting is, does that whole group in the regional building coalition, I'll use that word, want to bring in Woodland Park as a full partner? And since all three of those mayors are a part of that, they're cities, we might just have a little discussion on that next week and, you know, just kind of see what they're thinking. Lot of events coming up. I will point out that the student art over here is by Sam Garner. He's in the eighth grade at Woodland Park Middle School. And must be several Sam Garners. I know one that's a sophomore and plays football, too. So, anyway, events coming up. Through Wednesday, December the 18th, Christmas tree cutting in the national forest. $10 permits are available at the ranger station on Weber or at the middle school on December the 7th, 8th, 14th, and 15th. Pretty cold out there. Saturday, September the 7th, is the annual Kiwanis-sponsored breakfast with Santa. That's at the Youth Past Cultural Center from 8:00 to 11:00. It's free, and you get a picture with Santa for a small donation. Always a great event. Lot of volunteers do a lot of stuff for that. Saturday, December the 7th, in the evening, is the Lighter Side of Christmas Parade. Begins at 6:00 p.m., and the lighting of our community Christmas tree will immediately follow that at the cultural center. For the parade, unique this year, we're going to have fireworks. Probably good time, big-time fireworks. And the grand marshal for the parade is our own city clerk, Cindy Morris. Saturday, December the 7th, Sunday, December the 8th, is Tweed's Holiday Home Tour. Saturday, December the 14th, the Winter Farmer's Market at the cultural center, and that's from 9:00 to 1:00. Friday, December the 20th, Winter Day in the Park. That's usually a fun time. It looks like it might really be winter. And that's from 3:30 to 5:00. And there's some cooking that goes on. There's some snacks or things for the kids and--
We have smores in the chimney.
Smores in the chimney.
We have, uh, hot chocolate.
Yeah. It's a nice event. And for anyone that's interested, there's a lot of things going on at the high school over the next couple of weeks. If you're interested in basketball, they have a big basketball tournament going on, actually, tonight, tomorrow afternoon, and Saturday afternoon. It runs from about 3:00 until about 9:00 in the evenings. So, there's a lot of things going on in the community. Eric?
The only thing I'd like to add this evening is I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. And I want to, well, I just want to say I hope everyone has a safe holiday season and look forward to coming back next year.
Terry? Bob?
Yes, I saw this on my desk when I showed up, a letter from, let's see, Don Upfer, with some concerns based on his interpretation of an article in the Courier-Review about the council discussion on the Woodland Aquatic Project. I would propose that the board, we of Woodland Aquatic Board of Directors, meet with him and answer his questions. And in fact, we're looking for more board members, especially for marketing and things like that. And so, we could even invite him to join the board based on his past experience. So, at least I'll make that offer to him, or the board, we'll invite him to the next meeting in case he wants to. So, if you would permit us to then handle this, and if he has any further concerns, that that would be of a council interest, then we can, he can bring those to council.
And that sounds good. I mean, his input to us was just that. It was given his comments. And so, I think if the Woodland Aquatic Board wants to follow up on that, that would be great. Carol? Ken? John?
In the slight chance you don't read your emails from Sally, I do want to say that the Planning Commission is going to have a work session next Thursday evening. I'm going to be participating, and we're looking at what a zoning ordinance might look like for accessory dwelling units, just to give you an update on what's happening in that area.
Would that be a quasi-judicial type thing when it comes to council?
It's an ordinance, right?
So--
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah.
Okay. Just to kind of--
It would be legislative. I'm sorry.
Oh, would it be legislative? Okay. Okay. I'll second what Eric said on the holidays. David, do we need to do anything relative to the next meeting?
We will when it comes my turn to have Mayor Jurs' report.
Oh, okay. And well, in that case, we'll turn to Aaron.
I have nothing here on the table.
And now, we'll turn to David.
We have two scheduled reports, and then I'll follow up with requests. Give us an update from Utilities Advisory Committee, please.
As requested at last at the previous city council meeting, a brief update on Utilities Advisory Committee and things that they've been doing. Typically, we review the local water levels, also go over augmentation water and storage, and where it's at, and what water transfers occurred, and what's going on in that sense. Also, go over second tap discussions with Colorado Springs Utilities and augmentation reservoirs related to that. And then, finally, tracking the loading at the wastewater treatment plant and new technology possibilities. That's it, David.
Okay. Thank you.
And that committee brings any advice that they need to, to council for discussion and decisions.
And Brian's going to give us his monthly DDA Economic Development Report.
Just a couple of quick items. For work program elements 2014, the DDA will have a retreat in the month of January. We'll set up a work program strategy for the upcoming year, and I will be reporting on specifics at the January, the next January meeting, as well as economic development activities that we're looking at. We anticipate a very aggressive and busy 2014. As a function of the council's approval of Tractor Supply Project, the conditional use permit last week, we did meet with the DDA board this past Tuesday. They did approve, adopt, and approve a TIP agreement that was acceptable both to not only, obviously, the DDA, but the developer. So, the good news is they are moving forward with the construction schedule. I talked to Ray Hicks today, the developer, and they hope to begin construction probably April of 2014. So, we look forward to that project taking shape and moving forward. That's all I have right now, and I'd be glad to address any questions or comments from council.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. And Mayor, because we did successfully complete the budget this evening, I'd like to recommend that we, and because we've done some good scheduling, we don't have a need to have a council meeting on December 19th. And it would be my recommendation that you vote this evening to cancel the December 19th council meeting.
I will make a motion that we cancel the December 19th council meeting.
Second.
Who knows, there's like a trip away tie on that.
And I'm not going to be here, even if we haven't. We have a motion, a second, to cancel the December 19th meeting. Any discussion? Vote.
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Brevetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
I hope I didn't seem too overly anxious, but I was. And yes, David, one more.
Just to comment on the budget, I just want to acknowledge the hard work by the staff, working through this process, and then the council's careful deliberation of the process. One of the things that's very important to us is that we clearly understand the revenue stream and where these hard-earned dollars come from. And we think we are very responsive and very responsible on how we use those dollars. It's a very open process. If people have questions about either the revenue stream or the expenses, we're happy to go through it in as much detail as you would like. But I'm very proud of this staff for what they've done over the years to be extremely cost-conscious about the decisions